Okay, it's a couple of minutes after four o'clock. And I think we'll get the regular meeting of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission called to order here. It is, like I said, 4:02, December 5th. Before we get started, I want to mention that the item that was tabled from last month, the Veterans Home out there on Upland Drive, is not on the agenda for this month. So if any of you came to make a presentation about that, I apologize. It'll be, should be ready next month, should be. Okay. So I thank you for coming, and I'm sorry that it didn't get on. Moving on, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the December 5th, 2017 Agenda. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Senator, pick your hand up.
I'll second. Okay, all moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The second item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of, on November 14th, If there are no corrections or changes, we'll entertain a motion for their approval.
So moved. So moved.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Financial report for October of 2017.
This is Schrader with staff. Financial report was included in your packet. I'm just kind of perusing through it to see if I see anything that looks particularly out of order. I'm not seeing anything. Can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Looks like we started off with money. We still got money, and we're [laughing] ready to move on, huh? Need a motion to accept this financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Oral presentations. This is a time when anybody in the room may make a presentation on any item that's not on today's agenda. So if you would like to do that, please come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and a brief presentation. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the hearing for rezoning. This is a request by Black Hawk Economic Development Incorporated to rezone approximately 3.49 acres of land from A1 Agricultural District to M1 Light Industrial District located at and adjacent to 200 Nevada Street. I should say before we get started on this that it is now 4:05 PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for this request. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on November 22nd, 2017." Do we have a motion to place this on file?
So moved. Sorry, I'll take the second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye if there's no further discussion. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. The hearing is open. You have staff report.
This is Andera with staff. This is a request to rezone approximately 3.49 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M1 Light Industrial District located in close proximity and along the railroad at 200 Nevada Street, as well as for adjacent parcels. They are requesting the rezone of the properties in question to an industrial zone to make existing uses a permitted use and to allow for the expansion of existing and future industrial development in the area. Would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area or land use since the area is mostly comprised of industrial uses. There are some residences mixed in with the industrial uses in the vicinity just in the north of the railroad tracks. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. Area in question is Zone A1 Agricultural District and has been zoned as such since June of 1998 after it was rezoned from U1 Unclassified District, which is a zoning district that no longer exists in the zoning ordinance. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows. To the north, predominantly industrial uses with some residential uses zoned M1. South is a Cedar River Zone A1. East is existing industrial uses and vacant development grounds zoned M1. And west is existing industrial developments zoned M1 and A1. Rezoning request would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area. However, if a new development occurs, it will be required to submit a stormwater detention plan to the engineering department for review during the building permit process. Areas located in Zone X, 500-year floodplain protected by the flood control levy. Area in question are zoned A1 Agricultural District. However, there are multiple existing industrial uses that are considered legal nonconforming uses, and this area is comprised of mostly industrial development. Area was originally zoned U1 Unclassified District, which is zoning district commonly used for floodplain areas before the flood control levies were constructed in the 1960s and 1970s. The areas zoned U1 were discouraged from having new development occur within the floodplain. Due to the levies being in place, the area is protected by the flood control levy system and is not located within a regulated floodplain. In 1998, U1 District was eliminated from the ordinance, and all areas zoned as such were rezoned to A1 Agricultural District. There are many industrial buildings located within the A1 District in this area, and many of these businesses want to expand or have expanded in the past. GE Railcar located at 200 Nevada Street has done expansions in the recent past, but since they are in the A1 District, they are considered illegal nonconforming use. They have had to go through the variance approval process before the Board of Adjustment to allow for an expansion of a legal nonconforming use. All those particular variance requests for those expansions were approved by the Board of Adjustment. The existing railcar use would be a permitted use in the M1 Light Industrial District. Rezoning the areas in question would allow for existing businesses to expand without the need to go through a variance review process and make them permitted use and open up new ground for new industrial development. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to rezone approximately 3.49 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M1 Light Industrial District generally located along the railroad tracks at 200 Nevada Street, as well as four adjacent parcels be approved for the following reasons. One, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the area. Two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon traffic conditions in the area as well as pedestrian conditions. Three, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprises a plan for this area which does designate it as industrial. And four, rezoning the land to an industrial district will allow for the expansion of existing businesses without the need for the variance review, as well as make the area suitable for new light industrial developments.
Are there any questions for staff? Jim, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a presentation regarding this item? If so, please come forward to the microphone and give us your name, address, and your presentation. Okay, seeing no one, any discussion amongst the commissioners? If there isn't, we can entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, close the hearing. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's carried, thank you. Now we need to take action on this. If there's any discussion, fine, otherwise, we'll entertain a motion regarding this item.
So moved to accept the item as presented in the packet.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. There's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. That is carried. Our next item is, or two items are vacations. First is, not vacations like going away vacations, but vacating, I'm sorry. Request by Roger Kelsom to vacate approximately 6,670 square feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way located adjacent to 3325 Thistle Down Drive. We have a staff report.
Yes, the applicant for the vacate is Roger Kelsom. The applicant is proposing to vacate the stub right-of-way that was dedicated for a future street, Azalea Drive, which is no longer proposed to be developed as a street. The request to vacate approximately 6,670 square feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way would not have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. There is a home at 3325 Thistle Down Drive, which is adjacent to the vacate area, but the remainder of the area is currently vacant. A preliminary plat for the adjacent 90 lot, Kelsom's second addition, was approved by the City Council on April 10th, 2017. Has Azalea Drive listed as being vacated as well. The request to vacate approximately 6,670 square feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions. The area will continue to be served by Thistle Town Drive, which is classified as a local road, and will be extended as part of the 90 lot Kelsom second addition, whose preliminary plat was approved by the City Council on April 10th, 2017. The existing area is served by sidewalk, and Kelsom second addition as part of the final plat process will be required to have sidewalks as well. Sidewalk will need to be extended across the area to be vacated as well. There are interconnecting sidewalks, and there, but there are no recreational trails in the immediate vicinity. Site is currently zoned R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District. The site was rezoned from A1 District to A3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District January 26, 1976, and the surrounding land uses are all designated as R3 RP and consist of single-family homes or vacant land. Request would not require any buffering by ordinance standards. The proposed vacate of approximately 6,670 feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. The vacate area is currently vacant as well. The surrounding area is principally residential with structures built between 1979 and 2006. The area is not located in a special flood hazard area. There are also no schools or parks in the immediate vicinity. For water and utilities, there is currently an eight-inch sanitary sewer main underneath Thistle Town Drive and an eight-inch water main located in the vacate area. Approximately 80 feet of water main that is within and extends past the vacate area will have to be removed and capped since it will no longer be needed for future development. An existing hydrant may have to be relocated to within Thistle Town Drive right-of-way and connected to the eight-inch water main along Thistle Down Drive. A tenant's utility easement shall be retained by the City of Waterloo on the southeastwardly edge of the property to be vacated. The future land use map designates the vacate area as low-density residential. This request would be in conformance with such designation. The request to vacate approximately 6,670 square feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way would not appear to have a negatively affect the area or traffic conditions. Per the approved preliminary plat for Kelsom second addition, Thistle Town Drive was extended, and Azalea Drive will no longer be needed. Thistle Town Drive currently dead ends just past the area, proposed to be vacated, and a hammerhead turn around the area is in place that will need to be removed, and sidewalk reinstalled across the vacate area. The turnaround should not be removed until such time as the street is extended or an alternate turnaround is provided. There's no platting a part of this request. For the staff recommendation, therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate approximately 6,670 square feet of Azalea Drive right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would help prompt residential development. The vacate, the request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. Three, the site to vacate will accommodate the development of the site and subject to the following conditions. Retention of utility easement over the southeastwardly 10 feet area to be vacated. Removal of the concrete for the turnaround with new curb and sidewalk installed, but said removal will not occur until the time when Thistle Town Drive is extended or an alternate turnaround is provided. Approximately 80 feet of eight-inch water main that extends into Azalea Drive vacate area shall be capped and removed. And four, sidewalks shall be installed along the right-of-way Thistle Down Drive upon removal of existing turnaround except for any portion of the vacate incorporated into a subdivision so will have sidewalk installed in accordance with the deed of dedication of said subdivision or within five years of conveyance by the city, whichever occurs first. That's Heiburger with the staff report.
This is Flynn. Just wondering who would be responsible for the cap and removal, who would incur that cost? And also on the subject conditions, who incurs all those additional costs?
Yeah, all those additional costs would be covered by the applicant.
Everything.
Everything.
Thank you.
This is Hol, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to double-check if everything that was described in the end part or in the, when you described the conditions for approval at the very end of your recommendation, if all of those items are also covered in what was described in the tech notes as concerns under that item?
Yeah, I believe that the conditions as presented do address the concerns that were highlighted within the technical review committee notes.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
This is Holderman. I just have a question about sidewalk being installed along the right-of-way of Thistle Down Drive upon removal of the existing turnaround. I'm assuming they're going to sell this site or build a home on this site?
Um.
And I'm just wondering, do you want them to put the sidewalk in before they actually build the house, or?
Probably, yeah, not till after the home is constructed. And it'll, it's a, yeah, Kelsom second addition, it's a 90 lot subdivision, and, but basically a home is anticipated to go where the vacate areas.
Right, I was assuming that, but I just, just curious, because it seems like putting a sidewalk in and then driving heavy trucks and bulldozers.
Would not be a good idea.
Correct. This is Schrader with staff. And if the, it was anticipated that the entire area to be vacated was going to go to the applicant who is going to develop the subdivision, and then it would all go into an area that was going to be replatted in the future, we probably would have worded that condition quite a bit different. But the adjoining property owner with the home to the southwest there has indicated a intent to buy their portion, their half of the alley, so that part wouldn't get incorporated into a plat. So that's why we kind of worded it about, you know, that you have to install sidewalk except if it's getting incorporated into a subdivision, and then we kind of put a five-year provision in there, which is generally what the subdivisions or deed of dedication would normally work, provide anyway.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a presentation regarding this item? Please come forward, give us your name and address. Okay, seeing no one, there's any discussion amongst commissioners? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved. So moved to accept the item as presented in the packet.
I'll second that. Okay, subject to the conditions in?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes in favor. Is there any opposition? Okay, thank you. That item is carried. The next, the next vacation is the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate approximately 4,518 square feet of Idaho Street right-of-way located at the northeast corner of Idaho Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. We have staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of Idaho Street right-of-way located northeast of the corner of Idaho Street and Martin Luther King Drive. The request to vacate the section of Idaho Street would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area. Section of right-of-way is not needed for transportation purposes. The site has been zoned CP Plant Commercial District since the adoption of ordinance 4950 on July 27th, 2009. Zoning to the north is residential zones C1 Neighborhood Commercial and R2 1-2 Family District. To the south are agricultural and the Union Pacific Railroad zoned R3 RP Planned Multiple Family District. To the east, agricultural and residential zoned R2 1-2 Family Residence District. And to the west is agricultural and residential zoned R2 1-2 Family Residence District and R3 RP Planned Multiple Family District. The area to be vacated is not in a floodplain as indicated by flood insurance rate map number 19030250193F. However, the eastern portion of the land that the vacate will be attached to is in the flood, 500-year floodplain, and a small portion of the easternmost part of the land is in the 100-year floodplain. There is an 18-inch storm sewer line located on the eastern side of Idaho Street, north of Willow, but not in the vacated area. There are overhead utilities along the western side of Idaho. The future land use map designates the area as mixed commercial, medium to high-density residential, professional office, and compatible commercial, and the request would be in compliance with such designation. The request to vacate a portion of Idaho Street right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact on neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. The proposed vacate would allow property to be, to have the same westerly proper land as the parcels to the north. The section of right-of-way proposed to be vacated is not needed for transportation purposes and would leave a 65-foot right-of-way matching the right-of-way of Idaho Street to the north of the vacate. During tech review, it was noted that there's a water main on the west side of Idaho, which turns west along the north side of Willow Street. It was also noted a storm sewer inlet and a drainage way is located on the north side of the property. These issues do not affect the vacate, but will need to be taken into account when a site plan amendment for the property is submitted. There is, therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate 4,500 and 18 square feet of Idaho Street right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. The request vacate would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have negative impact on the vehicular pedestrian traffic in the area, and the right-of-way is not needed for transportation purposes.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
This is Dunup, I'm sorry. Would there be any, there would not be any concerns about the drainage way along the northern portion of the vacate area?
As noted, it, that would be something that comes up during the site plan amendment.
So not at this time?
But it's not required part of the vacate, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, oh, actually, sorry. If there's anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item, please come forward and make your presentation. Okay, seeing no one, if there's any further discussion amongst commissioners, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
This is Castle, and I approve, or I approve, I move that we approve the vacate of 4,518 square feet of Idaho Street right-of-way to be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The chair's in favor. Next item is request by the City of Waterloo to adopt the Waterloo Regional Airport zoning Pages 44 through 78 in your packet.
This is Schrader with staff. I'll turn it over to Brian Shune with Iowa Northern Regional Council of Governments as they prepared this ordinance on behalf of the City of Waterloo, Black Hawk County, and the City of Cedar Falls, the three jurisdictions that the ordinance would impact.
Thanks, Seth. Are we on here? Can everybody hear me? This is Brian Shune with the Intercoag Office. Thanks for the introduction, Eric. What I'll try to do this evening is be respectful of your time. I'll kind of walk you through the highlights of the ordinance. There's a lot of pages in the packet. Just to give you an overview, as Eric indicated, the ordinance is a mirror ordinance in all three jurisdictions around the airport. It's viewed as an overlay ordinance, and I'll just kind of step you through a little bit of the process. It's, it just impacts the Waterloo Airport only. No other airports in Black Hawk County, so it just is affixed to that particular airport. It would replace an existing ordinance. The city has an ordinance on the books, so if you read the preamble, which is the all-caps lettering at the top, you'll see that we're replacing an ordinance that exists, updating it, hopefully improving it as well, and then getting a consistent ordinance across all three jurisdictions with the idea being that the respective staffs within those three jurisdictions then would be responsible then for enforcement and, as well as staffing then. There's two separate bodies at the back of the ordinance that we'll kind of walk through here real quick. Chronologically, again, in your packet, there was an overview, kind of walked you through how we got here. What had occurred was the Iowa Department of Transportation, or IDOT, had hired an engineering consultant to help develop a handbook. I brought it along. It's about three inches thick, as you might imagine, but what it does contain is a lot of good information with regard to developing the ordinance itself. Does provide a lot of template language for the ordinance, and so that's where we started. The DOT did put this out to RFP and the councils of government. We are one of 17 in the state. Did bid on providing then the work to the City of Waterloo, as well as two other airports in our region. We service six county areas. So this is the middle one in terms of moving the process forward. We've got one completed and be canon independence, and we're working our way then through this particular situation. All three jurisdictions, as Eric said, are looking at this mirror ordinance. We're kind of working our way through the process simultaneously. Cedar Falls just concluded the process. Black Hawk County, we're through the planning commission, just going to work through the elected body, so we're about on the same page with regard to the, the ordinance development itself. When you look at it, kind of front to back, if you want to kind of look at that ordinance moving forward, what you're going to see then is a preamble, that's the all-caps lettering. It really talks about what we're doing. We're replacing and rescinding an existing ordinance and putting in place this particular ordinance. You will then see a series of, of legal sections. What's the purpose of the ordinance? Obviously, it's, it's a protective measure in terms of development around the ordinance, primarily regulating height. As you look through it, you're going to see reference then to height. It is consistent then with DOT regulations and FAA regulations with regard to height stipulations around the Waterloo Airport. You will notice then that there are a series of very technical definitions that are provided across probably through about page eight more or less, and those are important when it comes to the regulations. But in terms of, of really what the ordinance stands for and what is intended to do appears in three tables. There's a table one, two, and three that you'll see. One and two are very short, and what those tables do are, is establish then the FAA regulations off the ends of the runway. We'll talk a little bit about the map when we get there, but the map is really a three-dimensional map. Even though you look at it, it's two-dimensional on sheet, but will be regulated because it regulates height. So it is a three-dimensional map. What you're going to see then, as you look at those first two tables, are a series of dimensions, and those dimensions then form the polygons, the GIS polygons, that are denoted in color, or as you looked at your packet, you got that map that actually showed those polygons that were protected from a height standpoint. And so the, the first two tables really establish the five zones. There are five zones, not unlike your zoning ordinance. You use, you use R1, R2, those kinds of nomenclature. We're using A, B, C, D, E. This is an overlay, so it acts a lot like your floodplain ordinance. So it's in addition to the existing regulations in all three jurisdictions, and you'll then see through those tables the establishment of the polygons. Table three is really where our day-to-day work would begin if we were staff, that and the map, obviously. What that does is it identifies then a potential long list of uses, and I kind of refer to that table three as the Rosetta Stone. It's kind of intended to cross between the three jurisdictions so that a single-family home then is treated the same with regard to this ordinance across all three jurisdictions. So it does not matter if you're working with City of Waterloo, City of Cedar Falls, or in Black Hawk County, there, the zoning is still the same in terms of the A, B, C, D, E. So the treatment is then uniform across three jurisdictions. We actually, interesting kind of side note is that we had that table cut down to a much smaller size, thought that would work, and then started exploring through discussion how various uses are treated differently between the jurisdictions, and you've got a county in the mix too, and that makes it challenging. So county zoning is an entirely different thing in Iowa. So we had to go back to the lengthy table, add the pages in, and go through that elaboration. What you'll see then after the, the tables, once you get past table three, real quickly as you look at that table three, you're going to find three, three basically distinctions or class- or classifications that are made then by use, by area, or by zone. So across the top, you got the A, B, C, D, E, and then you got the uses along the side. The letters are intended to mean C, meaning compatible, meaning that use is particularly fine in those zones, and then you've got not compatible, which is just what you think it would be, meaning it's not compatible. Those primarily appear right off the ends of the runways, as you might imagine if you correlate that to the map, and then you're going to see the AR, which is the additional review. And what that does is it puts then the stipulation of the requirements back on staff to then go through a series of checks and balances, and we've actually created that checklist. I think that's also in your packet, where the staff would use then that tool to help make the determination, is it a C compatible, is it a, an NC not compatible? And so it really lays that back on staff, and that was really the crucial part of developing that table was setting the same standard across all three jurisdictions. You know, when do we want staff to do that, knowing full well that if we're asking staff to do more perhaps than what we had expected, then that's going to lay that back on staff. But again, our goal was to try and avoid variance requests and changes and things like that to the ordinance itself once we get it established. So we really put a lot of that back on staff themselves. You're going to then, once you get past the table, you're going to then come to then the distinctions. There are two bodies that are actually created, and you're probably wondering, why do we need another planning commission? Why do we need another board of adjustment? We're not replacing anybody. What we're doing is proposing to use two members from the three existing planning commissions, city of Waterloo, city of Cedar Falls, and Blackhawk County. Likewise, putting the seventh individual then, who's the airport director who's here this evening, as that seventh person on the planning commission, likewise doing the same thing with the board of adjustment. Again, two members per jurisdiction with the seventh, or the odd person then being the, the director, and I didn't mean odd that way, Keith, so. But putting that, that odd person out in terms of vote counting in the hands of an expert, somebody who knows airports, somebody knows this particular airport, and somebody who understands the regulations, because as we all know, sometimes you work with volunteers. Sometimes it's more comfortable for the volunteers on the commissions and the board to have an expert right on that commission and board with them. So we threw Keith, I guess, into the mix of that as well. And then you're going to see some of the, the language in there, like non-conforming uses. Perhaps some of you, when you read through it, were wondering, oh, what happens if the use is already there? And it's not unlike your current zoning ordinance. If the use predates the ordinance itself, then you're, it's there. And so we're not asking anybody to take down, remove, do anything different, but we're saying if they do change it ever in the course, that they become consistent. So again, very, very similar to what you've got probably written in your current zoning ordinance and any other ordinances. So you'll see that nonconformities are addressed at the back as well, and that basically entails the ordinance. We won't go through the checklist. Again, that's intended to be a tool for the staff so that in those AR areas in table three, those additional reviews, that the staff would use that tool to help then move that particular request either to compatible or not compatible. Of course, with any ordinance, to avoid a taking, we've got discussion in there about variances. There's a paragraph in there about variance requests, and there are four standards, and I think those four standards are fairly consistent across most communities, probably in the state of Iowa. They deal with hardship, and they deal with burdensomeness of the regulations, and then the uniqueness that may be presented. Again, same standards for that board of adjustment to meet those requirements. Again, we all know the board of adjustment's job in hearing those variances is that they're probably starting from no and moving towards yes as, as information and facts are provided. So that's basically the, in the nutshell of the text, the map, of course, correlates or goes along with that, like most zoning ordinances. There's not only written word, but there's also a map that goes along with it. You will see in the map, again, the version you've got is a little small, but you should be able to zoom in and zoom out because it was PDF, and it's colored. There's the A, B, C, D, E. You'll note that the runways are triangular in shape for the most part. There are three runways out there. You'll look at the ends of the runways, they're numbered. Basically, those are the degrees on the compass, so when you see those numbers and you see them in tables one and two, that you know then those correlate back to specific runways. So as you look at those, what we had to do was then use the FAA standards, our GIS, our Geographic Information Systems Specialist, then created that map using those standards put forth by FAA to create those setbacks. So those aren't numbers created by Intercog or by the city or by staff. In this process, those numbers were provided. And so again, the map then is, is really an illustration, and it's intended to be three-dimensional. I tell everybody, you know, the best example I can come up with is think of a bowl, and at the bottom of the bowl are the runways. And as you come off the ends of the runways, the bowl slopes up and on the sides, so A and, A and B, and then likewise with area C, those slope up on the sides of the bowl, and there's a flat piece called the horizontal plane or the horizontal zone, and that's D, and that's a hundred and fifty feet above the ground. And then area E then begins to slope up then from that horizontal area and go upward from there. So that's really what you're looking at. I know it's a little hard to see two dimensionally. Our GIS person actually built a somewhat working model three dimensionally, but didn't want to, didn't want to bring that and show it to you because it's pretty colorful, but it is a much easier way to see it. But it is a three-dimensional zoning map if, if you're trying to draw a comparison to the, the maps you're used to. So, questions? Hopefully I didn't, didn't overwhelm you or bore you to tears, I guess.
This is Flynn. Just, is this consistent, like, across states, or are there, there parameters that you use for smaller municipal versus obviously a Chicago airport, or you know, that type of thing?
Right, right. No, that's a, that's a great question. What, what the, the numbers set in the tables, which then generate the map itself, are actually dependent upon the level of service of the runway in question. So really, if you think about it, the more instrumentation there is attached to the runway, the more regulation you're probably going to see. So as you look at that Waterloo Airport and you look at those three runways, you're going to see that one that runs basically northwest, southeast. That's the longest runway out there, got the most instrumentation, so you'll see the most regulations then attached to it. So yes, it is very much, the regulations or level of regulations do correlate then with the level of service of the runway in question.
Thank you.
And so that's why you've got kind of the oblong shape too on your map. We don't have a perfectly symmetrical circle or anything like that working our way around those runways.
Well, this is Do Not. I mean, I just don't see how we can make changes as this commission because it's not a good idea to change what's already said. I mean, because I don't know enough to, I don't know enough about what we're talking about here to tell you that what you gave us as a presentation is wrong and it should be this way. And so when I, I guess what I'm saying is, I would not be a good person behind the, of the airport commission, so I'm not one of those.
We, we did, Eric, leave a little bit of latitude in the, in the text as to who, which members then are polled to serve in that role, and would leave that then to the jurisdictions in question to identify who those persons might be. So I suspect, though, you could learn quite a bit if you go through the ordinance, and if you spend a little time with your airport director, I think he can probably run you through pretty quickly the, the nuts and bolts of what you're looking at. So that's again, why we put him in that role.
And this is Schrader. Just as a side note, the Airport Zoning Commission and Airport Board of Adjustment hopefully will not have to meet very often at all. I'm thinking it's anticipated that we'll get, you know, assuming this ordinance makes it all the way through all three jurisdictions, we'd get some appointments made and probably have an initial organizational meeting, adopt some bylaws, that type of thing. But the way it's set up, the Airport Zoning Commission would be there to make further amendments to the ordinance if deemed necessary, and yeah, hopefully they're not really necessary. I, I think it could be envisioned if there are significant changes to the airport. That could be one reason why changes to the ordinance would then be needed. The Airport Board of Adjustment is, you know, again, hopefully not going to be needed all that often, but that's where potential, you know, variances, exceptions to the requirements will come up. The requirements are, are really not that restrictive. I mean, they, they start, you know, in close proximity to the runways as very restrictive and get less restrictive as you work out. And, you know, generally speaking, there's a pretty big clear zone area where nothing's going to get built right at the end of the runways anyway. So as you get out to the points of ground that are privately owned and buildable, that's not saying you can't potentially run into some conflicts, but they're, they're generally pretty rare, and hopefully the ordinance will be set up where for the most part it should be able to be taken care of through the compatible or additional review criteria. But in the event that something comes up where an exception is needed, you know, that's where the board of adjustment would potentially come into play, the Airport Board of Adjustment.
This is Flynn. It's a wise idea, I think, to have the airport commissioner be the seventh person because all the other positions are variable, and hopefully that's not, it's a more knowledgeable and less variable position.
Hopefully maintains your leadership too on those two bodies. Yep, no.
Well, it's kind of nice to have somebody know what, that knows what they're talking about. Not that any of us don't, but you know.
No, and that's, it was actually-
I guess the expert would be.
Yeah, it was actually one of the points that we discussed with DOT. As we've been doing this, putting together this ordinance, as you might imagine, it's taken quite some time, is we run the, the examples or the templates or the, the drafts back through DOT staff, and that was really one of our biggest picking points or, or stumping, stumbling points was when we worked through table three, was how much latitude do we have to deem something compatible or not compatible? And they told us, you know, the more you lay back in the additional review category puts more on staff, so know what you're doing to yourself, I guess, is really the warning we got. But we did it anyway in an attempt, I think, to try and avoid some of those, those variance requests in board of adjustment meetings. And then we did ask about putting an, an actual staff member on a board or a commission because that's a little unorthodox, not necessarily a problem, but a little unorthodox, and so they were, they were fine with it. Again, it's, they're leaving it up to the local governments to identify the who, you know, that is involved with the process, so long as the ordinance is consistently used across all three jurisdictions, and they agree to do it that way as even-handedly across the three jurisdictions and, and that we run everything through DOT would be fine. So again, they've seen drafts as that, that chronology or that overview I gave you, and I didn't expect you to read it, but it's in there as well that we actually ran the drafts through, including all the maps, because we had a lot of concern about the maps just because they are that three-dimensional map, and it does affect people's property, their largest investment they'll make. So again, we tried to make sure we were pretty exacting.
Okay, now I have a question again. This is Do Not. My question is, what was before this? Because aren't we setting up a commission? So what, who did, who did what the commission's supposed to do now before?
In terms of the airport commission and the airport board of adjustment, that was actually one of our challenges, Eric. When we started this was identifying who was actually on those boards or bodies because they were in essence dormant. They all existed, they were all there in name, but we couldn't identify necessarily all of the individuals who are serving in those roles, and if they did, I'm sure their terms have long since expired. Because the ordinance, we could trail the ordinance back, Eric, to about nineteen fifty-seven, fifty-nine, somewhere in that neighborhood. The original versions of the ordinance that we've got actually go back that far, but it was difficult, and, and it wasn't just the case here in Waterloo, Eric. It's been the case in all the communities we've worked in, Intercogs worked in, regardless of which airport. So whether I was working over in Buchanan County on their airport ordinance, or in Grundy County, or here in Blackhawk County with the Waterloo Airport, we had same challenges. Was, there was some remnant information, but it was never complete. And so really what we're doing too is trying to kind of reset the, the timer here a little bit and reappoint and get this thing kind of back where it probably should be in terms of knowing who's on those bodies and making sure the ordinance is up to speed. So we're trying to kind of reset the, the clock here a bit too.
I guess, I guess my larger question wasn't, wasn't that if there was a commission before, but the things that, the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission does, there's a certain, there's a certain set of things that this body does. So whether or not a, a commission existed for what's going on at the airport, who did, who did those duties, whether or not it was a commission or not?
We don't know that, Eric. That's actually the answer. You know, that's part of what we're doing by resetting the clock.
Yeah, this, this Schrader with staff, probably to some extent, the bottom line would be maybe FAA. I mean, when you're dealing with developments that probably wouldn't otherwise have met the requirements, I think that's maybe some of the impetus for this is to try and catch problems and issues a little earlier on in a development process rather than when it's ready to be built and then it's realized, no, you're too high.
Yeah, and that, you know, and that's putting a little bit back more on the local governments, I think, is what Eric's really saying, is, is you're taking it on. You know, these regulations, we didn't make the dimensions up, as I told you before, and those stipulations technically are handed to us, so they're there to some degree. What Eric is also, I think importantly, pointing out here is that we're trying to head off than a project getting too far down the line before knowing that we've got a height issue. And so we're taking a little bit more of that on at the local level so that when I walk in the door, I'm, I'm developer, and I walk in the door and I've got a request and I'm in that area, and again, it just affects the area on the map, not the rest of the community, but if my property's there and I've got a request in front of you, not unlike the ones you handled earlier this afternoon, they're going to run me through the paces, they being staff. They're going to check my property against the zoning map, the zoning ordinance, the floodplain map, the floodplain ordinance, they're going to do all those things. This is going to become one of those checks. That's part of that process, and hopefully we can deal with them through staff issues. In a couple of instances where we've had actual requests come up in ordinances that are now in place, the questions have been about height issues related to buildings. They've been in areas, primarily in area D, because we've gotten off of the airport property, and so we know that in area D, that's a hundred and fifty feet level flat height, no zoning ordinance is going to allow an accessory building that's probably more than thirty feet, forty feet. So we didn't even come anywhere near that, that, that top end, so it was easy for the staff to sign off on it. So again, that's to some degree what we're hoping here, but again, we're trying to reset the clock a little bit and trying to identify, but Eric's right, those stipulations are there. It's just a matter of, you know, when, when do you actually have to contend with them?
So what action do you want from us as a commission? I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to ask the same question, Eric, so don't. I'm assuming you want us to, just to recommend that it-
Approve it or-
This is Schrader with staff. We are looking for a recommendation on it. I will note that there has been a issue raised or question raised as to whether or not since the airport is within the city of Waterloo, owned, maintained, operated by the city of Waterloo, if the city of Waterloo should have greater control, higher representation on the airport, Planning and Zoning Commission, the Airport Board of Adjustment. That was discussed and reviewed with Brian, and there sounds like there could be some code issues with how the state code is set up to provide, you know, for essentially kind of an equal number from each jurisdiction plus one. So, and I guess you could kind of argue we've, we've got the, the plus one essentially, but it's, it was an issue that's been discussed, so I just kind of wanted to note that, but-
But that would be beyond our scope of what we do.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, well then we, I'm sorry.
Do we have to choose the members?
No, that, that will be done by the city council.
Okay.
I think, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Mayor and city council.
Yep.
Just like essentially appointment to any other board or commission.
Right.
Okay, so then I guess we could-
So do we just have to approve or adopt it? Okay, I make a motion to request, approve or adopt the request by the city of Waterloo to adopt the Waterloo Regional Airport zoning ordinance.
This is Tyson, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the chair's in favor. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, certainly your staff knows where to find me, so we'll be glad to get those answers to. to find me, so we'll be glad to get those answers to you, hopefully in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again.
Looks very thorough. Thank you.
Yes. Our next item is the Potential Zoning Ordinance Amendment Regarding Fireworks Sales.
This is Schrader with Staff. I really just, this was just put on as discussion, wanted to generate a little bit of initial discussion and get some thoughts on where we think we need to go if anywhere on an amendment. But as a little bit of framework for this, the City Council at their meeting last night approved the first reading of an ordinance. It'll, they did not suspend the rules, so it'll take two more readings yet, but have passed the first reading of an ordinance that kind of deals with two different aspects of fireworks. One is the usage and the other is the sales. And on the usage side, the ordinance they passed would ban usage within the City of Waterloo. On the sales side, they included some wording in the ordinance they passed to limit or restrict the sales of fireworks to essentially industrially zoned areas, referred to the M1, M2, and M2P industrial districts per the ordinance. There was, leading up to that, kind of quite a bit of discussion about the appropriateness of a regulation like that, kind of, that's kind of a land use regulation, essentially a zoning type regulation, not in the zoning ordinance. It was deemed legal that they could do it that way, but then there was also discussion on, does that potentially create conflict with the zoning ordinance? And I think it would be staff's suggestion that assuming the second and third reading go through and per the code of ordinances, fireworks are limited to industrial zones, it would probably be best if we followed up with a zoning ordinance amendment to make it mirror that, to avoid the conflicts. Because as it sits right now, fireworks sales is not listed in the zoning ordinance, but anytime something is not listed, it basically, you, you look at if it's essentially the same as other uses. And the past interpretation has been that it's essentially no different than retail sales, and retail sales are listed and are permitted in C1 Commercial District and Less Restrictive Districts, so C1, C2, C3, and then, you know, the industrial districts. So a little bit of conflict there that I think it would be best by addressing with a zoning ordinance amendment. So that's kind of the background and open it up for any discussion.
I have some questions. With the, with the action that the state legislature took, first of all, what was that action? Because that wasn't my area of expertise or what I worked in for being affiliated with the state legislature. So, and how does that affect what either the city does or what we can do because of what the state legislature mandated?
It, it's a good question and there's a lot of unknowns surrounding that because the legislation was passed, you know, relatively swiftly and without a lot of, you know, real analysis of what exactly it means. But, so the regulations make it clear that municipalities can restrict usage. So they have the authority to, so first off, the regulations the state passed set kind of time period, date, date periods on sales and on usage. And municipalities can, they, they wouldn't, they could not be less restrictive than the state code, but they are allowed to be more restrictive. So they can shrink that date for usage, or they can ban it. They can, they can, yeah, shrink the window or ban it. On the sales side, it's a little less clear. It, it, it seems basically that they were making it clear that you could not ban fireworks, but indication has been you can still apply proper zoning to fireworks. So that gets you into, you know, an area where, okay, you can restrict them by zoning, but your zoning restrictions still have to essentially be an appropriate and reasonable restriction on that use. And that's where a lot of discussion has ensued.
Okay, this is Tyson, and I know that, if I'm correct here, whether it's VGM or Sunnyside, that they've had fireworks in the past and, because I've looked outside my window and I've seen them.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll kinda, what I know, and I'm not the expert on it by any means, but there are essentially different classes of fireworks. And a large event fireworks like that is what are considered display fireworks. And display fireworks aren't really regulated by what the legislature passed. Those were already heavily regulated and the regulations on those are pretty much, they are what they are still. To shoot off display fireworks, you have to get a license or permit from the local authority and you have to be like a, you know, an expert, a pyrotechnician, essentially, to shoot off what are considered display fireworks. Below display fireworks, there are then what is considered consumer fireworks. That is the bulk of what the recent legislation is addressing, is consumer fireworks. And consumer fireworks are further broken out into a Class One and a Class Two. I don't really know the difference in there other than Class Ones are kind of your bigger bang and the Class Twos are a little bit smaller. But for the most part, I think the Class One and Class Twos, there's not a huge difference and they're lumped into consumer fireworks. And then there is one other category of novelties, which is what was previously already permitted and aren't changed either, your, you know, your sparklers and-
And that's what I'm getting to, because about 10 years ago, and it's a community outside of Waterloo, and it was a gentleman, he had a birthday party, and he must have had 15, 20 acres, and they shot off fireworks, exploding all over, it's kinda cool and fun and big picnic. And is that kinda what we're opening ourselves up to as a city or that they wanna see or you get-
Well, so again, depending on the size of fireworks that they're shooting, whether or not they fell, fall under the display or the consumer, if they'd fall under the display, that legally could only be done with a permit and someone that's considered an expert, essentially. The consumer fireworks, the, as I understand it, some of the consumer fireworks at the higher end are still pretty good sized. They're, they're, they have the mortar shells that still can shoot up a pretty good distance and make a pretty decent sized bang. So based on what the legislature has passed and assuming, you know, you're complying with any local restrictions on usage, you could, yeah, put a, a, a pretty big event, essentially a pretty big display using this, consumer fireworks only, you know, and not have to get any sort of special approvals for that.
So will we be starting from new or adding on or just?
So we would not be proposing to address usage in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance, you know, generally, you know, you know, doesn't get into the use, I mean, we get into use, but you don't get into like the use of a consumer product. You get into the restrictions on the sale of the consumer product. So that's what we would be looking at. And the question is, where is it appropriate to sell fireworks? The concern has been, particularly if an establishment is going to stockpile a large amount of fireworks, that it will change the fire rating classification of that building to something that would be classified as a hazard. And typically, a building classified as a hazard would not be allowed in proximity to residential or other commercial areas. But the way that the legislation was passed, there's certain fire code provisions that the, the fire sales, the fireworks sales fall under. And it, to some degree, kind of preempts local regulations from otherwise classifying it as a hazard building and prohibiting it. So the Fire Department has expressed concern and suggested that the fireworks sales should be limited to industrial districts. You know, the, there's a little bit of concern on, you know, lumping all fireworks sales in there. Does that, you know, cast your net a little farther than it needs to? And some concern on, you know, i- if the concern is keeping a large stockpile of fireworks away from residential or other commercial uses, simply restricting it to an industrial zone doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're gonna do that because we have lots of areas of mixed zoning where you've got industrial districts with residential or commercial uses either right in that same industrial district or right next door. So-
I'm not trying to be critical either, but I know there's, if I'm correct, this past summer, there was some out on the Port Road, is that what, anybody else notice those out there?
So the pop-up tents.
Yeah, pop-up tents. And I know if I go across the border into Missouri, they've all got, they're usually in buildings, unless I won't see the ones that they have on the side of the road somewhere, but I just wanna have safety.
And Nat, this is Flynn, and Nat, but I, I think that, I think it's a great idea that we get a consensus, but right now I think we're kind of, in literal terms, putting the mash before the firecracker, because we have to wait and see what the council does and even state legislature can make changes. We know hands of government does not work real quickly. So I'm just saying that I, I agree it's an admirable and a good thing to do, but I think we have to find out what parameters we have to work under before we can work on it. So it's kind of a mute point, right now. That's what I would say.
Okay, and I agree with what you just said. And I know, this is Do Not, I'm sorry. And I also know that there, there were a lot of people that were very concerned and they didn't wanna, they didn't want people to be able to use fireworks because it was a disturbance, it was a noise nuisance. And I agree with your proposal about limiting, limiting fireworks sales to industrial zones. And I also agree with what you said too, so.
Well, and I'm not an elected official for the City of Waterloo that I'm gonna make a decision on whether I'm gonna allow fireworks in Waterloo. So I guess I'm just thinking, we're kinda, again, putting the mash before the firecracker, before the horse, that we have to find out for sure the direction our city leaders are gonna go before we can fall in line behind that.
It sounds like our city leaders are headed in the direction of, of no use-
Right.
-of fireworks in Waterloo.
And then are people gonna wanna do pop-up tents if there's no use in Waterloo?
Well, see, that's my, that's my thinking is, why, why are we even talking about this? Because if there's no use, there shouldn't be any sales.
Well, so this is Schrader. Very likely, let's make an assumption that Reading Two and Reading Three pass and we, you know, the City Council enacts a ban on use.
Then we would act upon that.
Right. But very likely, there's still going to be interest in companies for the sales.
Right.
Because they are selling to more than just Waterloo residents. We're considered kind of a regional hub from that, you know, from a, you know, sales standpoint.
Except they weren't very prominent in Waterloo before we had fireworks available to do. You know what I mean? We didn't have as many pop-ups. I've lived here for 50 years.
Well, but it was outlawed.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. And so when Waterloo allowed it, the pop-ups came. Now if we disallow, will they dissipate to an, we don't know.
Well, who knows? I mean, states, the state still allows it.
Right.
But, you know, before, the state didn't allow it, and so there wasn't anything.
So that's what I'm saying. I think all this, we're, we're kinda-
But yeah, I have to agree with you. I think that we're getting the-
A preamble to what we don't know. Yep.
Yeah, well then, the, the second part of that would be, then my, my thinking would be, well then, let's limit whatever sales occur because we are that regional, regional hub, as you described, then we just limit it to industrial zones as proposed.
Well, if that's what they're gonna do, I think they also ought to put something in there, limiting sales to anything outside of 300-foot radius of any place that sells or stores fuel.
Right.
Or flammable.
And that was gonna be, sorry, this is Castle, that was kinda one of my questions. I know that when you're doing the building codes and zoning, there are requirements for what you can and cannot sell and how the buildings are rated. Is there going to be, in the Waterloo Building Code, anything that's added in regards to like paint stores have different ratings and requirements than, you know, Walmart, or I guess Walmart has paint, but you know, anything that would be just a clothing store or something, is that something that we can look at or is that not, I know it's not our place, but will the city be looking at that?
I'd, I'd probably have to ask that question of the building official and it may actually be the fire marshal, because I think a lot of those restrictions actually fall under the fire code as opposed to-
Yep.
-the building code. But, and I'm not the expert on it, but as I understand it, I, I think the legislation that was passed essentially basically dictated what fire code applies. And that's been one of the issues that the Fire Chief and Fire Marshal have had, is that it kind of preempts them from using some of the other fire codes that would normally to apply to this type of use. But we can definitely look at that further.
I just know that, come the time that if we have to make a decision, that would influence what I would vote on too.
Well, since, can we make a motion to table until-
There was no action for this. It's just a discussion item.
Just discussion item.
There's no action. We're just talking.
Yeah, we don't need a table. It was just on for discussion only, so no action was. I was just trying to get initial thoughts and debating if I would potentially have a proposed ordinance ready for January. But at, at this point, I really am not sure that I will, because I don't know that the-
I wouldn't worry about that quickly.
Yeah, I don't know that the council's gonna be through theirs yet, so.
Council won't be through and our sales won't be happening that quickly, you know what I mean?
Cause my, I know this is discussion, I know we weren't gonna take any action, but my motion was going to be, you know, to table this item for a vote until after everything was completed as actionable items.
But there's no motion.
Yeah.
There's no motion.
So we can just do that.
This is-
I'll just look to, wait to bring it back until we've gotten a little further down.
This is Wilbur, but I would be interested in, at that future point, more on the concern that you had brought up about and getting staff's thoughts on, well, if it is just, if, if sale is just limited to industrial, how do you address those concerns of industrial zones still being close to certain residential?
And that's why I brought up the building codes too, because I think that that would really have a big influence on how those are next to each other.
You could put a certain distance away from any zoning, yeah.
Is that something that can go in, then that our, our commission does or is that-
I think it definitely is. It could, definitely, it could bring up more concerns of, okay, you know, assuming the council finalizes what they've got in front of them now, you know, their set of regulations, which would be kind of in conflict, but we have, and then we're gonna amend this and potentially put that in conflict. But it, it's best to have ordinances, you know, not be in conflict, but ultimately if there is a conflict, the more restrictive provision applies. So it's not that you can, it's not inherently, you know, prohibited that there be a restriction between ordinances.
Yeah, this is Tyson. Again, I, I think that's important too, and it might be great, not that we want, a person wants a lot of phone calls, that somebody from this commission is, gets to sit in on that, you know, or at least invited to some of the meetings that they do have, you know, so.
Okay, that was it from our perspective. Our next item is the election of Chairperson and Vice Chairperson for the term ending December 31st, 2018. Do we have any nominations?
I was gonna offer my name for Vice Chair.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for Chair? Or other nominations for Vice Chair?
This is Tyson. I'd like to throw some support toward Jamie being our Chair. I'm not sure she'd be interested or not.
Wasn't gonna volunteer myself.
Okay.
But if we're looking for someone, I'd be willing if no one else was. My only question was, I know there was concern with me not being a Waterloo resident, so I didn't know if that was problematic.
It, it's not. I mean, I, I know before you were appointed, it was questioned, but the past practice has been membership on the commission- but the past practice has been, membership on the commission is allowed for individuals that either reside in the city of Waterloo or work within the city of Waterloo, so it should not be an issue. Then the only other restriction on the chair, per the code of ordinances, is the chair has to come from...
A city-appointed person.
Yeah, one of the appointed positions, as opposed to the three...
Which I am not appointed.
Right, but the vice-chair, it doesn't specify that one, so the vice-chair could come from any of them.
No, thank you, I'm vice president of the board, I was...
So, I have a question for Craig.
Okay.
Don't, don't, don't you want to stay as chair, or are you leaving?
It makes no difference to me. I can stay as chair. Jamie is very knowledgeable.
I was going to say, you're welcome to have it.
I don't...
Probably better looking than I am, well, not probably, I'm more scared.
The only thing I would say is, because I am a real Waterloo person, so, it does bother me a little bit when people live in other cities and they represent Waterloo. That, that's just, I'm going to speak from my own personal opinion, so. Not that it maybe would be an issue with anything else, but I just, you know.
So what does that mean? Is that, is that down to me, or what?
Well, I, I mean, if Craig still wants to do it, and he lives in Waterloo, I guess I would throw my vote that way, just because that's how I lead. Not, I think you're very knowledgeable, I didn't even know you didn't live in Waterloo, so. So now I have a, I have something against you now, now.
Yeah, and I would have voted...
I own a business in Waterloo?
Yeah.
I, I would, I would have voted for either one of you, I just thought that Craig wanted to continue being chair, so I would have thrown my vote that way, thinking that Craig would have wanted to continue.
I will if you want me to, if you don't, I won't be upset or hurt.
Okay.
So.
So what, do we take a vote, then?
We need a motion first.
We have, we need a motion for, should we do each one separate?
You can do each one separate, or you can do one motion together, either way is fine.
And Jamie, can I be clear, again, is it okay? I mean, are you, you said you were going to...
I, I'm fine with it, as long as, I mean, it's up to you, if you want to stay on, I wouldn't mind another year watching, but it's perfectly fine either way to me.
I think Mr. Tyson has confidence in you, and I've known him for a while.
Appreciate it.
He's, he seems to be a pretty square shooter, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Jamie to be our next chair of the Planning and Programming and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further nominations? If seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I'm the tiebuster.
One, two, three yeses, one no.
No, no, I voted no.
Oh, you voted no? Oh, wait a minute, we had three.
I'm saying, I think I'm supposed to say yes, but I don't know what I'm supposed to do. Being nominated, I say yes, but...
Okay. It's two.
Yeah, so there was two no's.
So let's, let's do that, let's do that overall. In favor of the motion, Jamie being the chair, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay. It's three to two. You're it.
Okay.
Chair abstaining?
Well, the chair does only, the vote counts only if you break a tie, is that correct? No?
No. My rules of order, but...
Well, I, that was what I was, was under the impression, because I... I would, I would make it, I would say no. No offense, but I, for the same, for the same reason that Sue...
Who breaks the tie, if it's three to three?
You need another motion?
So...
So...
That, that motion doesn't move, doesn't go anywhere, you know.
So I make a motion to avoid Craig Holdeman as chair.
So what did you do?
You need a second? Okay, I'll second that.
Did you, what, what was your...
A motion as Craig Holdeman as chair of the Planning and Zoning.
Okay, but you motioned, you...
He seconded it.
I seconded.
But you were on the other motion.
I know, but we're, we're starting over again.
We're starting over.
We're start, we're starting, this is a new motion.
Okay.
That was my motion, he seconded, so.
Okay.
I'm voting for it.
It's been moved, well, hold on, it's been moved and seconded that Craig Holdeman be nominated as chair. All those, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, the chair votes aye. Now, vice-chair.
I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Do Not as vice-chair of the commission. Second.
Okay, you will accept?
Yes.
Okay. All, if it's been moved and seconded to elect Eric Do Not as, as vice-chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye. You're it, Eric.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Adjournment.
So moved. Second.
We are out of here. Thank you so much.